All right, we'll call this meeting to order, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. It's six o'clock. City Council Special Session at Oak Ridge City Hall. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is Jackie online? Jackie, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Councillor Coker.
Here.
Councillor Bjornson. Councillor Tarman.
Here.
Councillor Brewer.
Here.
Mayor Ketchin.
Here.
Councillor Kenyon.
Here.
Councillor Hollitt.
You sent a message saying she might be a little bit late. Nice to see Councillor Bjornson online, but I didn't know if you could catch her.
Okay, yeah, I saw her, but I didn't hear anything, so.
Councillor Bjornson, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is item four, which is additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda. James, anything? Any councillors having any recommended adjustments to the agenda? Okay, moving on to item five, public comment before we get started. Since this is a public hearing, you can remark, make comments now in a general sense. But each of these resolutions that talks about the budget and then the state funding, revenue sharing, will all have an opportunity for a public comment during that particular time in the agenda. So your choice, if you want to come up now and talk or wait until appropriate time on that other part of the agenda. So we'll open up the public comment in the room first. Anyone like to speak? Please.
My name's Danielle Lam, and I am at Corey three two nine Commercial Street, right around the corner. And so I have three minutes. I don't know if it will take me three minutes. I'm just a little bit concerned about the public safety fee. And was hoping that it could be resolved through budget planning. Because, you know, we've all been hit pretty hard, especially the middle-class sector. And so I'm struggling. I'm not we're not able to apply for a grant or whatever you want to call it. So you know, they're hitting us from the top down. It seems like it's happening at the city too. And I know you guys have bills to pay too. So, but having said that, I think that working hard, you can probably find a way to make the budget work without having to go to the people for the public safety fee. But that's basically where I'm at, again.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much. Any comments? Looks like Mr. Barkley, please.
Mayor, councillor, and comrade Bjornson is dubbed by disgusting small-town politics. Safe to say that twenty-four twenty-five budget was the messiest process I've seen regarding municipal budget since moving here. And thank you, Eric and Melody. You made that a little bit less messy. I commend committee members for working through the challenge of an abbreviated cycle, unknown values to some extent, and a significantly delayed start to the process. During the meeting, some wanted to cut expenses for seasonal workers in the Parks Department and OFD volunteer stipend, both motions failed by majority, as is the process. Conversely, thirty-seven thousand dollars was approved to create a part-time position in the Planning Department with its corresponding increase in personnel costs and immunity for yet another cycle where expenditure will likely double revenues. We'll spend ninety thousand dollars on a forty thousand dollar return, excluding the time investigating officers are pulled off patrol and their other duties. On tonight's agenda are standard budget-related resolutions for the imposition of taxes, state revenue sharing, and certification of services required by Oregon cities, to name a few. Tonight's agenda, item ten point six, will essentially ask council the question of what level of budget deficit is acceptable? Is it two hundred and seventy-three thousand deficit with a renewed PSF or four hundred and eighty-six thousand deficit if the PSF expires? Deficit spending is nothing new for Oak Ridge, but at what point can citizens expect elected officials to spend within their means, no different than any small business or household would as a matter of financial responsibility? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barkley. Anybody else in the room like to speak? Somebody else online like to make a comment? Okay, moving on to mayor comments, announcements, and proclamations. The only thing I have is just to inform people this is a budget hearing. We'll hold a public budget hearing to receive public comment on the city's annual budget for the fiscal year July first, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and associated uses of state shared revenues. The proposed tax rate is unchanged and the proposed renewal or reduction of the public safety fee and other fees. This public hearing, we have at Oak Ridge City Hall, and then citizens, obviously, may attend in person or on Zoom. So that is the primary purpose of this meeting tonight, is for the public to give comment to the budget that has been available for a week or longer advancing. I know others doing there. Any counsel or comments or proclamations? None heard. Consent agenda eight point one is minutes from previous city council meetings on five thirty twenty-four, six six twenty-four, and six six. That's not right. Yes, six six twenty-four, regular meeting. One was a work session. Is anyone opposed to the consent agenda? All right, motion passes. Number nine is appointments. There are no appointments. Ten is business from the city council. Ten point one, resolution thirteen twenty-two four, adopting the fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five budget and setting the property tax rate. So first, before we get started with any motions, again, I'll offer a chance for public to comment on this particular resolution. Online, anyone online would like to comment on resolution thirteen twenty-two four, adoption of the budget? Anyone in the room? It's, we'll ask and if the staff can answer it on the spot, that's fine. Please.
The ten point one resolution, including the property tax rate.
James or Melody, you would like to respond to that?
The property tax rate has remained unchanged for many years, but it's basically passed except
No, it won't be done.
Won't be done.
I think they call me towards that, please.
Please.
I entered a paper over there about twenty twenty to twenty dash three zero measure, it was declined by election.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what I hear, because she was talking about the safety fee. That's what the safety fee they came up with, began with.
Yes.
And sixty-five percent of the public said no.
Yes.
And you guys adopted it twenty-one anyway, for tax. That's the last part, how we make sure she had that.
Okay, thank you. All right. Do I, James, do you have any introductory remarks for this item?
I have no introductory remarks. I was just going to mention that Council brought it, if what we're, we want to address these things for some reason. If some of the lower hanging through first you can, or things.
We'll stick to the agenda. All right, do you hear a motion on this?
I have a motion. I move to remove the halftime planning department position, including all wages first and anything that goes with the financial pain of this position. I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by councillor Brewer, seconded by councillor Kenyon. Any discussion, questions? Get a quick discussion.
Yeah, I was just going to bring up the fact that because this area is part of the general fund account, I feel like we should be working as if we're in a deficit and not hiring new people causing more deficit. So that was my discussion on that. I feel like it's not the still you responsible to hire someone else, even a halftime employee at this time.
Okay. Any other discussion? Please.
I actually have ordered now, but I did a lot of work looking at the proposed budget with public safety fee to figure out whether or not the halftime planner position that's being added and the seasonal workers that are being added back in the Parks Department affect the public safety fee. And I found that they absolutely do. If public safety fees for the I'm
Yeah, just let one person at a time.
If those two were not added back into the budget, the public safety fee could actually public safety fee could actually go down to thirteen dollars a month. But with those in there is why we need the twenty dollars a month, but actually we only need nineteen. But I'm assuming that's why James proposed twenty, just to round it up. So I absolutely agree about removing the new halftime planner position that was added. And then with this, I'll make a motion for the other.
Stay with the agenda. Anyone else have comments? All right, Jackie, would you call for a vote, please? And the motion was to remove the two part-time, is it, please, go ahead, write it down, write it down.
Well, she made the motion. Yeah, sorry. It was the remove the halftime position, the assistant planner position from planning.
Okay. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Councillor Brewer.
Hi.
Councillor Bjornson.
Hi.
Councillor Tarman.
Nay.
Mayor Ketchin.
Nay.
Councillor Coker.
No.
Councillor Kenyon.
Aye.
Councillor Hollitt here yet or online?
I haven't seen her.
Okay, three to three. Is that what you got, Jackie? That's what I got. So motion fails. Um, you have another motion?
Yes, I move to remove the seasonal workers in the Parks Department, twenty thousand dollars.
Okay. Do I hear a second on this?
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion, motion, whether that counts, okay, a second, I guess, please.
This is just another example of money that we're spending out of a fund that's already working in a deficit. So adding more deficit doesn't make any sense, even though, yes, we could use help in parks and, yes, we could use help in planning. And yes, we could use help in all departments. But we are not financially sound to add more to our deficit. So that's, again, why I'm not wanting this position either, because it just doesn't make sense financially for us.
Yeah. Any other comments or discussion? All right, Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Mayor Ketchin.
No.
Councillor Brewer.
Aye.
Councillor Bjornson.
Aye.
Councillor Tarman.
Aye.
Councillor Coker.
No.
Councillor Kenyon.
Aye.
All right, I have three, three again, motion failed, fails. Are there any other motions to be heard on this? Please.
I make the motion. We've had the volunteer stipend at the fire department.
In its entirety?
Yes.
Okay, motion made by councillor, the councillor, Coker. Do I hear a second on that? I'll second.
Second.
Good.
Sorry, which is the second with you.
All right, discussion, questions of staff on this? All right, unseen. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Councillor Brewer.
Nay.
Councillor Kenyon.
Nay.
Councillor Hollitt. Mayor Ketchin.
Aye.
Councillor Coker.
Aye.
Councillor Bjornson.
Nay.
Councillor Tarman.
Aye.
What was that?
Sorry, aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Councillor Hollitt, I see you're online. Are you able to hear us?
Yes, I logged on late. Unfortunately, I won't be voting or participating in the discussion tonight because I have an actual conflict.
Okay. Then the vote is three, three, and that motion fails. All right, do I hear another motion?
It was up.
The vote's completed. Do you have a question, councillor Bjornson?
No, I just wanted to state my potential conflict of interest because I'm a volunteer with the fire department. I forgot to say that at the beginning.
Okay, hey, thank you. All right, is there another motion to be made here?
I move to lower the public safety fee to fifteen dollars per month to be removed January first, two thousand twenty-five. Excuse me, July first, two thousand twenty-five. So it would come off on the first day of the next fiscal year.
Do I hear a second on this motion?
I'll second that.
Motion made by councillor Brewer, seconded by councillor Kenyon. Any discussion, questions of staff on this? So essentially, you're extending the public safety fee at fifteen dollars for one fiscal year, if that makes sense? Not during, not during this session, after we tell public comment. Um.
So my thought behind this is the fact that lowering it by two dollars isn't going to help as many people as lowering it by more could. And I do feel like we could make adjustments to offset things. We'd have to go back and look at it, obviously, but I'd really like to see this public safety fee have a cap so that our citizens don't have to keep asking when it's going to be over. Because right now, they think it's never going to be over, and that Oak Ridge is never going to pull ourselves out of this hole that we're finding ourselves in. And so I'm hoping that maybe the public will be a little bit more okay with the fifteen dollar, having it lowered by the seven dollars instead of two.
Okay. Any other comments? Councillor Kenyon, please.
I absolutely agree with that. I think we could even afford to go to thirteen if we were to have removed the building planning position and the seasonal workers that have been removed from the budget both of the last two years because of public safety fee. But since we're adding those back, we will have to find a way to save another roughly sixty thousand dollars out of the budget in order to have that reduction down to fifteen. And I'm okay with that.
Okay, any other discussion? All right. I'm sorry.
I was going to say, can I, can I make an amendment to the motion?
You may, yeah.
I make motion to remove our ambulance service so that we can recoup that money that we're losing through the service in order to offset the public safety fee.
So you want to add this to the current motion?
He wants to amend the current motion.
Well, that, the only way you can do that is by adding that entire sentence to the already.
Vote on my motion first.
You can, you can put an amendment in there anytime you want.
I didn't want an amendment. That's what I'm saying. We haven't voted on my.
If any councillor can bring an amendment to it, that's a motion.
I didn't know that. Thank you.
Councillor Kenyon.
So to clarify, councillor Brewer, since he's made that amendment, what will happen is we will vote on his amendment first.
Okay.
And if it.
I, you know, it's not instructional time here. This is real life.
Well, point of order, I was very confused. And so I appreciate your helping me understand
Welcome.
this specific thing, because I was lost and I was confused as to what was happening. So I don't think it's a bad thing for a councillor to help accounts ever.
Okay, so the new amended motion would be to reduce the public safety fee to fifteen dollars to expire on one July twenty-five and the
Amendment would be to add
to, to not, to give up the ambulance, be the, being the ambulance provider for ASA seven. Is that all right, councillor Tarman?
Yes, that's correct.
I have a question.
Please.
What's his amendment? He's taking the ambulance completely out of our budget?
Yes.
But it's taking it completely.
Yeah, we have, you have to give the county ninety days advance notice. So it would be obviously down the road in the middle of our fiscal year, more towards the middle of the fiscal year. But yes, once that is, once we vacate being the provider, all the ambulance-related stuff in the EMS department would be removed and zeroed out.
For what we mean with that, is one question.
The Lain County is required to provide ambulance services. And they use that ninety days to find another provider if they could. Most of this.
Would that provider be stationed here?
No way to tell. It'd be an RFP that goes out, and it would be bid on and chosen.
What decision?
Yeah. Um, so what we'll do now is we need a second. The motion was made, the amendment was made by councillor Tarman. Is there a second? And seconded by councillor Coker. Any discussion questions about the amendment, which is to remove or cease being the ambulance service provider for ASA seven? Councillor Kenyon, please.
Yeah, I'd like to note that this in my opinion, from everything that I've heard to the last three to four years on this matter, I don't even think Lain County would allow this idea to pass. But if they did, it is most likely we would be having a minimum of one hour wait time for an ambulance to come up from Eugene or Springfield if there was one available at that time. And that is ludicrous, half a bar can that goes down in the ambulance. Good. Not survive.
Any other comments, councillor Bjornson?
Yeah, I'll just tag on to what councillor Kenyon was just saying, and this has been discussed with the county in the past, and the county does not have, there's no resources in the county to provide the service for our area. So I mean, I guess if you vote for this, I guess you don't want to save people in this area.
Okay.
And Jackie, that's not really funny to me. Thank you.
I'm not really laughing.
Oh, sure, that's not what that was.
Okay, enough, please. All right, um, any other questions? Questions of staff? Okay, what we'll do now is vote on the amendment, which was to add to the original motion directing the city to no longer be the service provider, ambulance service provider for ASA seven, which is our ambulance service here that we are in now. Jackie, would you call for a vote?
Councillor Brewer.
Nay.
Councillor Kenyon.
Nay.
Mayor Ketchin.
No.
Councillor Coker.
No.
Was that nay?
No.
Councillor Bjornson.
Nay.
Councillor Tarman.
Aye.
All right, motion failed, the amendment fails. Now we're back to the original motion, which was to reduce the public safety fee to fifteen dollars a month and to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Yes.
Any other questions on that original motion, please?
So with this new motion on the table, it's if it fails, does it go back to the twenty-two dollars?
Yes, well, it'll go back to, if, if the budget is adopted and if the public safety fee ordinance passes. So for now, it just leaves everything unchanged if it fails.
Just as a point of work, what being suggested is producing it to twenty dollars.
Right.
Well, what I'm kind of getting at is depending on whichever way we decide to go right now, is it going to come, is it going to come up in the budget as fifteen dollars? If this is approved, is it going to come up in the budget as twenty dollars when we go to adopt the budget?
If, if it passes, it'll be fifteen dollars when you vote on it either second time or next, or this third time. Because it's got to, got to be read twice.
Which, sorry, if my math is correct, twenty-five percent off. So the revenue coming in, fifteen dollars. Two hundred fifty-nine thousand seven fifty.
Yeah. Any other comments before we go to a vote?
I, I'm not sure how to raise my hand, but I was, I think this is related. Have we ever had a answer on the special fire district relating to this, so we could know in the future if this is the ambulance and fire is going to go to a special district this year, or has there ever been a resolution to that?
It's not been brought to the city council yet, still in committee. So right now, I couldn't tell you what the recommendation of the committee is. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yes. Councillor Brewer.
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon.
Aye.
Mayor Ketchin.
No.
Councillor Coker.
Nay.
Councillor Bjornson.
Aye.
Councillor Tarman.
Nay. Sorry, I'm not used to being online.
All right, I have three yes, three no, so motion fails. Any other motions to be made here on the agenda item, which is the adoption of the twenty-four twenty-five budget? All right, none heard, I'll make a motion. I move that we approve resolution thirteen twenty-two four, adopting the approved fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget in the amount of seventeen thousand, three hundred and ninety, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and making the associated appropriations and imposing categorizing taxes after a first reading. I made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, motion made by me and seconded by councillor Tarman. Discussion questions, please.
Yeah, Mayor, you just mentioned agenda item thirteen point something.
Resolution thirteen point twenty twenty-four? Did I misspeak?
I, I don't know. You said thirteen dash something, and so I'm confused as to where we are. I thought we were on agenda item. Uh, I, I don't know. You said thirteen dash something, and so I'm confused as to where we are. I thought we were on agenda item. Ten point six.
No, we're on ten point one. Ten point one, which is resolution thirteen, twenty twenty-four, adoption of the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget and imposing and categorizing taxes.
Okay, my apologies. So you must have read of a resolution number of that, yeah, it's on the agenda.
Thirteen, twenty, twenty-four.
Thank you.
Yeah.
My apologies, I had the wrong one opened for me.
Okay, any questions or discussion on this item? None seen, um, Jackie, uh, let me repeat the motion again. The remotion, uh, motion was to approve resolution thirteen, twenty twenty-four, adopting the approved fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget in the amount of seventeen thousand, three hundred and ninety, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and making associated appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes after a first reading. So this will also have to go to its second reading, but be adopted. Anything else?
Just a point of work. If you said seventeen thousand, it's been seventeen million.
Yes, I did. Sorry. It'd be nice if it was seventeen thousand, wouldn't it? Uh, seventeen million, three hundred and ninety, five hundred and fifty-seven. Uh, Jackie, would you call for a vote? I'm sorry, one more question.
That has been pointed out.
Yes, it does. Yes. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yes, Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Brewer?
Nay.
Counselor Terman?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Nay.
Counselor Bjornson?
Nay.
Counselor Kenyon?
Nay.
All right, uh, two ayes, four nos, uh, motion fails. So we are not going to adopt the budget. Um, I guess we'll move on to item ten point two.
Were you going to allow public comment after each one?
Beginning before each one. So I allowed it for this past one, and we'll do it again for this next item, agenda item.
Oh.
And we'll have one at the end too, aren't we, James? Yes, there'll be one at the end as well. All right, this is item, agenda item ten point two, resolution fourteen, twenty twenty-four, certifying city services for state funding for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. James?
All right, uh, this one's relatively simple, um. You're required by state law to certify and provide certain city services. On setting of them requirements. So it's as this resolution certifies, you do provide those city services, receiving our state there.
Okay, so I'll open the floor up to public comment on this particular agenda item, which is city services for state funding, um. Anybody online want to make a public comment on this agenda item? Anybody in the room? Okay, uh, nothing heard, um. Do I hear a motion on this agenda item?
Point.
Please.
I move that we approve resolution fourteen dash two zero two four, certifying that the city of Oak Ridge provides at least four of the public services required to receive state revenue sharing after a first reading.
All right, motion made by Counsel Brewer, seconded by Counselor Coker. Questions of staff, discussion? Okay. Uh, James, how do you actually physically certify? Do you send the Department of Secretary of State a note?
Yeah, this is for, if we use your year. That would be something.
It's not one of the LVs, but it's, it's a pretty standard form. Um, there's the, the city resolution, and then there's a state provided resolution that's also signed in the same fashion.
Okay. Yeah. Obviously, we don't have an adopted budget on July first. We really can't send anything because we can't provide these services. But, um, all right, there's no other questions. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yes. Counselor Brewer?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Terman?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye. Motion passes, uh, six ayes unanimously. Um, is there a second motion might be made tonight on this?
Please.
Yes, please. I'm sorry. Thank you.
All right, City of Oak Ridge, resolution fourteen dash two zero two four, resolution certifying, City of Oak Ridge provides four or more required municipal services for state funding. Whereas RS two-two-one-point-seven-six-zero provides as follows, section one, the officer responsible for dispersing funds to cities under the laws. Three-two-three-point-four-five-five and others, shall in this, this city, okay, limit a county having more than one hundred thousand inhabitants according to most recent census, for such funds only if the city provides more than following services. Fire, sorry, police protection, fire protection, street construction maintenance and lighting, sanitary sewer, storm sewers, cleaning and subdivision control. One or more utility services. And whereas the official recognizing the desirability of this, it's being the state officer responsible for determining the eligibility of cities to receive such funds in accordance with Flores two-two-one-point-seven-six-zero, City of Oak Ridge certifies that it provides following services. Police protection, fire protection, street construction maintenance and lighting, sanitary sewer, storm sewers, planning, zoning and subdivision control. Water utility services. Resolution, but effective due to that fast by city council this year twenty-four. Didn't notice the ORS citing for cities that population thousand or whether referred to look up, or is two-one-one-seven-six-zero.
You think the citation's wrong?
Awesome.
Okay.
Um, within the county that has over a thousand so.
Very good. Thank you, James. Um, do I hear another motion that might be made tonight? Okay.
I move that we approve and adopt resolution fourteen dash two zero two four, certifying that the city of Oak Ridge provides at least four of the public services required to receive state shared revenues after a second reading by title only.
Okay, motion again made by Counsel Brewer, again seconded by Counsel Coker. Uh, are there any questions on this? Uh, not, no, I'm sorry. There, there any of the comment periods, you're welcome to stand up. Unheard, uh, the motion is to uh, approve and adopt resolution fourteen, twenty twenty-four, certifying that the city of Oak Ridge provides at least four of the public services, public services required to receive state share revenues after a second reading by title only. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Terman?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Brewer?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously, James.
Right, resolution fourteen dash two zero two four, resolution certifying, City of Oak Ridge provides four or more required municipal services for state funding.
Thank you, James. All right, uh, moving on to ten point three. That's, uh, resolution fifteen, twenty twenty-four, declaring the city's election to receive state shared revenues for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. James?
Right, that's similar to the resolution that passed, um, if we want to receive our state, um, shared revenue, which estimated to be about one point three million dollars. As this resolution sets the back funding.
Okay, and for the, the audience, uh, those revenues, those state share revenues examples are cigarette tax, liquor tax, and highway taxes. And so it all goes in the pot, and we would get a share probably on a per capita basis or something like that. Yeah. So, um, what we'll do first is hear from the public. If there's anyone that would like to speak on this particular agenda item, which is state shared revenues. There anyone with either online or in the room that wants to make a comment on this particular item? All right, none heard, um. Any discussion or uh, questions? Okay, none heard, um. The motion is to approve resolution fifteen, twenty twenty-four, declaring the city's election to receive state shared revenues during fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five after a first reading. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yeah, who made the motion?
I did.
And who's seconded?
Did you make? No, you're right, Jackie. There was no motion made.
Okay.
I was planning on it. That's what happened.
Well, go for it.
Okay, I move that we approve resolution, uh, fifteen dash two zero two four, declaring the city's election to receive state shared revenues during fiscal year twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five after a first reading. Also, there.
You were planning on seconding it, I'm sure. Um, okay, the motion was made. Once again, I'll ask the counselors if anyone has any questions on this. Otherwise, we'll go to a vote. All right, Jackie, please, uh, call for a vote, please.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Terman?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Count, Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Brewer?
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously, James.
Right, City of Oak Ridge, resolution fifteen dash two zero two four, a resolution declaring the city's election to exceed state revenue. Where this state revenue sharing law, ORS two-two-one-point-seven-seven-zero, requires cities to annually pass a resolution requesting state revenue sharing money. And whereas, in order to receive state revenue sharing this year twenty-four, twenty-five, City of Oak Ridge must pass a resolution approving participation in the program. And now there's also a result by the Council of City of Oak Ridge that section one, which is from ORS two-two-one-point-seven-seven-zero, city hereby elects to exceed state revenues this year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Thank you, James. Uh, is there a second motion that might be made tonight, please?
I move that we approve and adopt resolution fifteen dash two zero two four, declaring the city's election to receive state shared revenues during fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five after a second reading by title only.
Maybe a counsel verse second by Counsel Coker. Any questions on this second reading motion? All right, none heard, um. Motion was to approve and adopt resolution fifteen, twenty twenty-four, declaring the city's election, receive state share revenues during fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five after a second reading by title only. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Terman?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Brewer?
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Thanks.
All right, resolution sixteen dash two zero two four, a resolution declaring the city's election in state revenue.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item ten point four. That's resolution sixteen, twenty twenty-four, reading the Public Works Capital Reserve Fund. James?
Yeah. All right, after ORS two-nine-four-one-three-four-six, local governments must adopt a resolution or, or just create a new reserve fund within the state budget. We actually had this last year. That's correct. We forgot the other one. The Public Works Reserve Fund.
It's the whack, wasn't it?
No, it was.
They know they're not. They're making time for you guys. Okay, so this one's brand new. Uh, so this year in the budget, it was approved by the budget committee, added this new fund. Public Works Capital Reserve Fund. It's like you should, um, create that.
And for the public, think of it as a savings account that fences the money so, so an operation can save up money to, for capital purchases this, as equipment gets old or infrastructure gets old. Um. So what I'll do is open this up now to any public comment on this particular agenda item, which is creation of the Public Works Capital Reserve Fund, online or in the room. All right, nothing heard. I hear a motion. Please.
I move that we approve resolution sixteen dash two zero two four, establishing Public Works Capital Reserve Fund after the first reading.
Right, motion made by Counsel Brewer and seconded by Counsel Coker. Uh, are there any discussion questions about setting up these Public Works Capital Reserve? All right, the motion was to approve resolution sixteen, twenty twenty-four, establishing a Public Works Capital Reserve Fund after a first reading. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Terman?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Brewer?
Aye.
All right, motion passing unanimously, James.
City of Oak Ridge, resolution sixteen dash two zero two four, a resolution establishing a Public Works Capital Reserve Fund. Whereas the city of Oak Ridge operates a public works department, and whereas the city desires to accumulate funds for capital projects within public works. And whereas if a local government elects to create a new reserve fund within the city budget, ORS two-nine-four-point-three-four-six, requires the local government to adopt the resolution for, for creating a new fund. And whereas this city desires to create a reserve fund for projects in the public works. Now therefore be resolved by the city council, the city of Oak Ridge, that section one, Public Works Capital Reserve Fund, to meet ORS two-nine-four-point-three-four-six. City hereby establishes the Public Works Capital Reserve Fund to provide a budgetary fund, so versus proceeding and expanding funds for capital projects within public works. Section two, review of reserve fund. Not less frequently than every ten year after the establishment of this reserve fund, the city council failed to view the reserve fund and determine whether the fund that we continue to evolve. That should be, as today, this resolution, that's on the my list, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you, James. Is there another motion to be made tonight on this agenda item?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
I move that we approve and adopt resolution sixteen dash twenty twenty-four, establishing a Public Works Capital Reserve Fund after a second reading by title only.
Yeah. That you, Counsel Coker?
Yes.
Okay. Motion made by Counsel Terman, seconded by Counsel Coker. Any questions on the second reading? All right, the motion was the approve and adopt resolution sixteen, twenty twenty-four, establishing a Public Works Capital Reserve Fund after a second reading by title only. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Terman?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Brewer?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Uh, we're on to item ten point five. And that's resolutions.
James need to read it by title.
Oh, yes, yep, sorry. I added myself.
Resolution sixteen dash two zero two four, resolution establishing a Public Works Capital Reserve.
Thank you, James. Uh, again, the item is ten point five, and that's resolution seventeen, twenty twenty-four. City of Oak Ridge fee schedule for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, before we go to public hearing, just for the public's, uh, non. Um, before we go to public hearing, just for the public's knowledge, we update this or should update it every year. And it's a listing of all fees that the city charges to the citizens for various items, whether it be. Rental of park facilities, water fees, public safety fees. Administrative fees for anything that happens here in City Hall, whether it be a business license, a burn permit, all the rest. So. Um, it's it's an annual list, it's a listing and annually updated. Uh, so. At this point, I'd like to offer any, see if any public comment on these fee schedule. Okay, not hearing any. Um, go hear a motion on this. That's a door.
I move that we remove the public safety fee from the fee, the city's fee schedule.
All right, motion made by Counselor Burr, seconded by Counselor Coker. Discussion or questions? On this, many counselor? Please.
I'm just still unclear as to why we would deny removing things like. Um, additional workers from our budget, but we're more when we have counselors. Moving to remove ambulance. That went to me. So I I just think that this um. Fee schedule shows a public safety fee that could be adjusted, so I'd like to have it removed.
So James, from a legal standpoint, if this motion passed and the safety, public safety was removed from the fee schedule. You have the public safety fee ordinance passed. And it was approved, adopted, what would happen?
Uh, you would have some conflict there because with the original public safety fee was written in the the renewal. It says that it can be adjusted at any time. By the council through a resolution. Changing the schedule of fees. So. There are ways to fix that. We're simply removing it from the schedule of fees. I have to rewrite the. Like safety fee ordinance by a different way. To change that amount.
Okay, so if this motion. Fails, the public safety fee stays on the fee schedule. And the ordinance fails. Then what would happen?
Be no other safety fee ordinance. But there's a new point seven three.
Yeah, I figured that. Yep, okay. That's okay.
Um, did I just hear you mention that we, or someone mentioned that we've already passed the ordinance for the public safety fee?
No, I was making a hypothetical. If we did. It was just a question, staff, it was not, I was not stating we passed the publicity.
Okay, because we haven't got there yet, right?
Correct, yep.
So, um, I would like to amend this motion to reduce the public safety fee. To fifteen dollars.
One where I don't think we can make the the exact same motion, it's already failed. You have to wait two months.
Uh, this is a motion on just this fee schedule document. But, uh, okay, I'll make a scratch that. I'd like to amend this motion. To reduce the public safety fee to sixteen dollars. Second.
Right, the amendment was made by Counselor Kenyon and seconded by Counselor Brewer. Um, okay, any discussion on this amendment? My only comment is, is I think we're doing it the hard way here. I I mean. If you're not in support of the public safety fee, then don't or or want to adjust the public safety fee, then do it. When the ordinance is up for vote, don't have to go through and pick out all these individuals. The ordinance goes one way or the other, everything else will fall in line behind it. So I think we're wasting time here, but. Counselor Tom.
Um, yeah, so if. So say it's remove the fee schedule. And it then passes. Does that just mean that? That well, so if it's removed from the fee schedule and then we get to the public safety fee and say it passes, that just mean that. There's no mode to. Reduce it or turn it off in the future, or how's that work?
I think we just have to amend the fee schedule, that way mid-year? Or right after?
Yes, but if I understand Counselor Tommen's question, I. I think he is correct that if we. If we, because he's talking about the original motion, Council Brewers, that if we eliminated.
Hmm.
That, then there would be no way to adjust the fee. As thirty four minutes.
Oh. Adjust the ordinance?
But we could adjust.
And then you adjust the fee schedule and update it, right?
Yes, but if the original motion passes where there is none.
But you, but you, we can.
We could add it there, yes.
Yes, that's my thought. Okay. Please.
So, um, I understand where you're coming from. And my, my whole thing is, I do not want to pass a resolution for a fee schedule that has the public safety fee in it. So. How would a counselor hypothetically say? That. The resolution should be rewritten without the public safety fee in it. Is that a motion that I can make? In itself? Would that make more sense?
I think either way, whether. It's. If it's, if the fee schedule is incorrect at the end of the, when everything's adopted. We are going to have to go back and fix it with an update to match the resolutions. Would you agree, James?
Yes.
In either case, whether it's less, whether it's absent, whether it's full price, it's just.
Yes.
It's me or.
We could amend the proposed ordinance on the public safety fee. Remove the language where. Where the fee can be. Adjusted through simple resolution on the. Schedule of fees. Where it's just simply set thirty ordinance. In order to change it, we have to pass it for the ordinance. It doesn't make sense. Because right now the public safety ordinance. As stipulation, the amount can be adjusted anytime by council, simply by adjusting the resolution for the schedule fee. That's what it's been started. So if your motion were to pass, simply remove that from the schedule fees. Wouldn't happen to amend the public safety ordinance.
Or go back and adjust. Or schedule fees.
Okay, so if I wanted to. We have to vote on John's amendment, right, first?
That's correct.
Okay. Let's do that first.
Any, do you have another, I know you got your hand up for a while? Yep. Any other questions? Yes, I'm going to repeat the motion. The amendment to the motion was to. Reduce the public safety fee to sixteen dollars. In the schedule fees. Am I correct, Counselor Kenyon? All right, on the amendment, Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Mayor Ketchum?
No.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Brewer?
Aye.
Counselor Tommen?
Nay.
Counselor Coker?
No.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
All right, three ayes, four, uh, three nays, motion fails, amendment fails. Now, back to the original motion, which was to.
May I amend that motion, please, and um? Just, I guess we send it and we.
Hmm.
Question, okay. Okay, um, I move we approve. The recommended changes to the city's fee schedule. By adopting Resolution seventeen dash two zero two four. After a first reading. With the public safety fee. Removed from the ordinance.
All right, the. amended, restated motion. Was to approve the recommended change of the fees scheduled by approving Resolution seventeen twenty twenty four after a first reading. Removing. The public safety fee. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any questions, Counselor Kenyon?
Um, I just don't know that we can. Do something like that that would affect to. Or to our motions.
I don't understand you.
Um. Okay, this, this. Agenda bill that we are working on. Has to do with. Approving. The schedule of fees, right?
Correct.
Right, but she mentioned in her motion. Removing the public safety fee from the ordinance, which is a different.
See, we're, your resolution.
I said ordinance, but I meant resolution, I'm very sorry.
So you, you want to remove it from Resolution seventeen twenty twenty four, which is the fee schedule?
Yeah.
Okay. Also, also.
Accidentally.
All she's doing is removing it from the fee schedule.
Oh, okay. I was confused, I remember.
All right, any other questions, comments from counsel? So the motion was to move to approve the recommended changes to the city's fee schedule by approving Resolution seventeen twenty twenty four after a first reading. Removing public safety fee from the resolution, from the schedule. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Um, who seconded the motion?
That was Counselor Coker.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Counselor Tommen?
Nay.
Counselor Brewer?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Nay.
Counts Mayor Ketchum?
Aye. Uh, four ayes, two nays, motion passes. Um. James? You can read the resolution, please.
Right. City of Oak Ridge Resolution seventeen dash two zero three four, Resolution repealing and replacing Resolution fourteen dash two zero three. And establishing a new fee schedule, city services, permits and applications. Whereas the City of Oak Ridge, City Council desires to repeal and replace Resolution. Fourteen dash two zero two three and the exclusive fee schedule for city services, permits, application might be replaced with the attached new fee schedule. Why is? Uh, back to July first eleven point four. And whereas the Oak Ridge doesn't charge for right service permits, application of fees. And whereas the City Council agrees, administration of various charges will be greatly simplified if all such charges would be consolidated on residence. Both city staff and citizens of City of Oak Ridge could determine. Any of these charged by the state. Now they will be resolved by the City Council, City of Oak Ridge, that be set forth in the attached divestment shell. Service permit and application being effective July first two thousand and five.
Yeah, if we get a dispensable debt, it's not available to the public. All right, thank you, James. Moving on to item ten point six, uh, that's ordinance nine four six. Public safety fee renewal and reduction of the fee, James?
Um.
Yes, Jackie.
Oh, never mind. Never mind. Sorry.
Okay, uh. So public safety fee, I grabbed a new ordinance, nine forty six, replace the old one, nine thirty seven. Um, we are recommending. Renewing from the public safety fee, but reducing it on the old one. This will generate. Two hundred thirteen thousand dollars revenue. Um, couple of other changes we made. Uh, one, I raised the. Income. Uh, thresholds for being able to follow by the waivers. But approximately. Thousand dollars, basically, I raised. Three seventy level by a thousand dollars and then rounded up. Thousand. To make it so that people can qualify for that waiver. Some argument, there are public comments with, it does pass, obviously, like, this is like that. Question, happy to answer those. Uh, and our city attorney did, maybe a customer edits. But you know, folks about. And I provided copies and highlighted the needs. Changes.
Next, James. All right, uh, we'll open this up. This is, uh, the ordinance which implements and renews the public safety fee. Uh, which has been in place since mid twenty twenty. One.
Yeah.
Um. And so what I'll do is open up either online or in the room for comments on the public safety fee ordinance nine four six. Please.
That is like the council group.
Could you identify yourself in what city?
Um, seven down review.
Okay.
Um, sorry, can you spell, uh, Olson for us to the record, O L S E N. Four seven six zero two Hoover Street. Um, back in twenty twenty, we did, uh, you guys put in, uh, measuring twenty dash three zero eight, the public vote, you said no. Um, six five percent public said no. Um, several months later, the council said, well, we're going to do it anyway, but twenty two B on. Um, people feel that's a really moot, um, and challenge your ability to do that after we said no, no, my shit. Um, there's people I know that have gotten, uh. Leaks put on the property for not paying the fee. I think those should be paid back. People with disordered properties and the leaks on their properties now. Um, and again, I challenge you to say, you know, put it back, public vote, if the public vote says yes, then we do it. If not. I don't think six people on the council should go over and write a public book.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rolson.
Point, point, I mean, it's. Well. Talking to it, so.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this, uh, online, Misty, is it?
Yes. Uh, Misty Davis, four seven five six three Birch Street. Um, so for the public safety fee, my opinion on that thing is. I feel like it was definitely forced on us. I mean, everyone voted it down. I was irritated about it, whatever. I mean, I I actively pay my public safety fee. Um. But my question, I guess, would be, would be, um. Ambulance service response to Westford. And High Prairie, and I understand they're out of city limits, but I'm curious as to why. They also aren't included in the, um, payment of the fee. Um, because if we spread it out that far, I mean, let's be, it probably dropped down to like five dollars a month. Um, so there's that. And then, um. About just the budget in general. Um. It's crazy to me to nickel and dime the public safety fee so that it appears that you care about your citizens, but vote against saving the city real money from a volunteer program. That should be just that. Um. I understand the line of work can be hard, but in a poor town in a financial situation. Such as our own, it just isn't feasible. In my opinion, it seems the fire department is untouchable and I'm curious as to why. Um, I know feelings are very personal there. I'm sure I will get some kind of. You know, brush back from saying this. That's fine. I'm thick skin. Um, but. Another thing is also. Back to the volunteer thing, we want, we want that. I'm, I'm, I don't, but everyone does. And, uh. But we're wanting to take from parks, which. I'm assuming goes to maintaining the safety and cleanliness for our children. Um, which. I think is very important as a mother. Um. Anyways, like I said, I just think. A lot of things are very personal. I mean, as we've seen in the meetings, it's very clear where who stands with who, um, who's friends with who and, uh. Yeah, I guess that's just my take on it. So thank you for listening to my ramble.
Thank you for your comments. Any other? Comments either in the room or online? On the public safety fee, please.
I am around four eight fifty nine, initial street. Um, so. I understand that we've got the, um. The ability that, that people are able to. Sign up and and be able to, we have an easy way, I'll split it out any minute now. Um, and so. That's not so for everybody. And other people are having a hard time. And, um. Not so sure that we couldn't find a way in this budget. To knock this figure of public safety fee out completely. I mean, there's got to be a way. And if it means. In my opinion, if it means, um. There I said, lowering people's wages or. There I said, lowering people's wages or. Um, so they have skin in the game, game too, uh, because we're all really. Suffering from, from the current situation that we've got going on, putting a top down. Um, and or not hiring other people, any, but I don't want to micromanage that part. This whole thing. I really don't. I just want. The fee eliminated in one way, shape or form.
Thank you. Mr. Berkeley.
That's a little late, uh, because the decisions already been made or whatever, but just sitting here listening to the conversation. Would tonight's meeting have not been a little bit cleaner? Had because given the reliance, uh, uh, for the budget and the. The fee schedule on the PSF, would it not have been a little bit cleaner to? Have agenda ten point six ahead of. The fee schedule and the budget that rely heavily on the PSF, but I sat here and listened to council had, had the opportunity to, to trim. Roughly a hundred thousand dollars. And additional expenditures. To and create that revenue for the PSF that could offset the PSF, but, but. You know, council fifty fifty, some people stood up and said, hey, we need, we need to watch the finish here, and some said, well, maybe not so much. Um. But it seems like it would have been cleaner, uh, with, with the reliance on the PSF for the, the fee schedule and the budget. To done that at least ahead of the fee schedule, if, if not the budget as a whole and, and. Determine whether we're gonna have or not have. A PSF, uh, because the others rely on that, the, the, uh. Whereas the, the opposite is not necessarily true. Just, just an observation, and like I said, it's kind of a moot point because the. Decisions have already been made. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, um, my name's Brittany Wilson. Um, four seven six seven shift. Um, I was just wondering for the public safety fee, um, and the comment made earlier about how it can take over an hour. Like a different, um, emergency service. Um, sometimes it does take over an hour here for a moment to services because not all of our, we're just. Our emergency medical services right now are fully trained. So I would feel more comfortable paying of the public safety fee if that the training was there and they were actually certified. Instead of having to wait for certain people to get there. For, I mean, if we're paying volunteers that aren't fully certified. To do the job, um. So to me, it makes more sense if we are paying, if we. Um, have people that are actually there, that the whole crew would actually be certified to do the job. Otherwise, I'm not seeing a point of paying volunteers to do stuff that they aren't necessarily told that.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, do I hear a motion on this agenda item?
Yeah, motion.
Please.
Um, I move that we do not approve the ordinance. And then cut two hundred thirteen thousand dollars from the budget. Sorry, I didn't read the actual motion. Can I reread that, please? And, uh, I move that we. Do not approve ordinance nine forty six, renewing and reducing the public safety fee.
All right, motion made by councillor Brewer, seconded by councillor Coker. Uh, questions of staff. On this. My councillors. Remind us again, James, your deficit, if this is approved.
Additional deficit of two hundred thirteen thousand, so in total. Four hundred and something thousand. Exact amount. There, uh. From those numbers for us earlier today. Uh, our current deficit is three hundred fourteen thousand sixty dollars. So we added two hundred thirteen thousand to that, that would be. Five hundred. Twenty seven thousand. Sixty dollars.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, comment councillor Kenyon.
Yes, um, a deficit and a shortfall in two different states. The public safety fee is to cover shortfalls, not our deficit. Our beginning fund balance and our Indian fund balance. Uh. I don't know the right word to use, but, uh, they watch the deficit out. So I do not agree that. We would need to cut five hundred eighty some odd thousand dollars out of our budget. We would need to cut two hundred thirteen thousand, which is exactly what's this source of revenue.
Okay. Any other comments on this, uh, councillor Charman?
Uh, yeah, so if we don't pass this and it goes to fund, uh, fire, ambulance, police. Uh, uh, I assume, James, you've considered cuts, um, is that where the cuts are coming from then?
I, I don't have any plan, but. That's. My finance review of the budget committee and city council.
I, I. But I remember in the budget committee, we talked about public safety fee. And we, we asked like, well, if it doesn't pass, do you have a plan? And you, you said you had some things that you had identified to cut.
I, I mean, I have some ideas, but I, I, I just, I don't know if council wants to warn first and deciding. The city budget, if that is council's, uh, decision, then, um. Okay, I'm, I'm, I can, but. It's. Just beyond the person.
The other comments, please.
I just want to say that, um. My original motions to lower the safety fee were just to keep from having a shortfall happen, but I feel like there's no other way to get around it. And I feel like that we absolutely can go back and look at the budget and maybe get some actual numbers to see. So we can actually see what not just the proposed numbers were. For last fiscal year or the one we're in now, but actually see hard numbers so that we can make the adjustments. And I'm willing to put in the work for the budget committee to get this fixed and, and adopted before our deadline, so.
Anything else, councillor Kenyon?
I'd like to amend this motion to. Um. Add. Cutting, uh, two hundred thirteen thousand dollars from our police department.
Right, there's an amendment, you cut two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars from the Oak Ridge Police Department, should this pass, correct?
Right.
By councillor Kenyon. Do I hear a second? All right, motion fails for lack of a second. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Kenyon.
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to ask you, um, how. The process is gonna go from here. To how the council's gonna make decisions. On where to cut the two hundred thirteen thousand. Is that, are we gonna work on that tonight, is my question?
I don't feel prepared to work on it tonight. Um, i- in my mind. We should. The council should, if they are not happy with the public safety fee and they want to dispose of it, then reject. The ordinance. And at that point. Hand it back to the city administrator to come forward with some recommended cuts. I'm not gonna go through and willy nilly slash things that. He has more knowledge of, what he needs, it's, it's prioritized. But I would, I would send it back to. Uh, the staff to come up with some recommended change, you know, cuts, and we can, at that point, take those up and. Figure it out. But we're at a point now, we're seventeenth of June. And. We've just had a. The budget actually not get adopted. So we're almost, I don't know, are you gonna be able to make it happen if?
You know, most likely be a, uh, meeting on Friday, Saturday or Sunday. Certainly. Need to pass any order or.
So, you know, make the statement. And if you're really against this public safety fee, reject the ordinance. And then hand it over to the staff to implement the new budget. Direct him to find the cuts wherever he wants them. That's, that's my input. I personally think this, the public safety fee ordinance should have probably been floated about six months ago. So we would know one way or the other, whether it was in place or not, when we started to build this budget. But no, it didn't come forward. I asked about it and it didn't come forward. So I think that was the first mistake. Uh, the second mistake is, is, you know, you complain about the order, but in my mind, um. Reject the ordinance, adopt the budget, it goes to James to make sure that his budget, that he has to cut expenses in the new fiscal year to meet his. This was a, this was a, a revenue that was not for certain. And that happens quite a bit. So it's an uncertain revenue that was written into the budget and, and a dot and approved. And if you don't pass the public safety fee, then there will be a difference between his revenues and his expenditures. And he's gonna have to go back and make it bounce. That's, I mean, it's pretty cutting, right?
I'm just wondering about whether or not, um. With the, uh, hosting of the meetings. You're saying.
Good question, so we have.
A minute, ten days or.
Then there is.
When we. Seventeen point seven. Massive test ones.
I don't know if we have to renotice or not, since we've noticed this meeting. The budget hearing.
The budget doesn't change. I don't know, but someone figure out. I think it's a mistake to, I thought it was a mistake to reject the budget. And it, and we should have focused on what you wanted to reject, and that was the public safety fee, not the entire budget. And. By rejecting that public safety fee, you would have had to go back, James would have to go back and make his revenues equal expenditures. Is there? Any other comment?
Just as a point of awareness, now I'm thinking about it. We may be able to avoid the notice requirement by not ensuring the meeting at the end, but. Then you're continuing to. Thursday, continuing to date certain on Thursday. Again, that's. This motion passes. Think that's how to get a void deed. Notice.
Uh, councillor Charman, do you have a? Comment?
Uh, yeah, um, what are, what? So. I haven't looked it up. What exactly happens if we do not pass a budget by? You know. June thirty first, um.
That's gonna be a motion that I'll make at the end of all this, that, uh, have. Direct the C A to start planning for a orderly shutdown, except for essential services of city government until we can pass a budget. We cannot spend funds in excess of certain amounts. Unless it's safety of life. So that's what happens. Are you agreeing with James?
Generally.
Is, uh, I was just curious, I, I, I. Heard, uh. Somebody was telling me that we can actually be fined, the councillors can be fined. Uh, is there any truth to that?
I have no knowledge of that, and I've never seen it in writing anywhere.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any other questions? All right, so. The motion was. To not approve ordinance nine forty six, renewing and reducing the public safety fee. And. Then cut two hundred thirteen thousand dollars from the budget, is that correct?
Yes, I did, yes, I thought.
Yeah, that amendment, cutting the two hundred thirteen thousand from the P D. Didn't pass. Don't think council or.
It was in her motion, was it?
Um, it was, I read it from. The resolution itself. Sorry, I read too many papers out, where are we, ten point six?
Yes.
I read it from the paper itself, and then instead of saying authorized or approved, I read, I said not approved, and then it was.
Okay.
Sorry, it's right here. Yeah, it just said I moved that we do not approve ordinance. Nine forty six.
That's it?
Uh, after, yeah.
Okay, so the, uh, motion was to not approve ordinance nine forty six, renewing and reducing the public safety fee. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Um. I thought she added and cut two hundred thirteen from thousand from the budget.
Yes, that was part of this, and then I, I reworded it, sorry, Jackie, I read that and then I remembered.
So the way I stated this, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Are you ready?
Ready to vote, Becky?
Okay. Mayor Ketchum?
No.
Councillor Kenyon?
Aye.
Councillor Coker?
Aye.
Councillor Brewer?
Aye.
Councillor Bjornson?
Aye.
Councillor Charman?
No.
All right, uh. Four ayes, two nos, the motion passes. Moving on to item ten point seven. That's, uh, ordinance nine four seven, the fuel dealers tax increase, James.
Yeah, um, I'll be brief over the, the, the riff. Basically, this ordinance, nine forty seven, we replace, um, or sorry, I mean, then. Just important, eight, seven, six, raise the. Motor fuel dealers tax. A three cents gallon, forty five, it's a gallon. Sorry. Uh, yes, so the motion is, or the proposal is, uh, the turn to fuel dealer license taxes, three cents gallon. Place in the black, the street fund, the motion is raised, uh, by one point five cents, or total of. Four point five cents per gallon.
All right. We'll move to public comment on the fuel dealers tax increase. Any public comment on the fuel tax? Right, nothing heard? We hear a motion on this.
Sure.
Please.
I love we approve ordinance nine forty seven after first reading. Okay.
All right, motion made by councillor Brewer, seconded by councillor Coker, discussion.
Um, I have discretion, so I'm trying to quickly make another note. Um, Rick, I heard you say to put the street fund in the black. Are you suggesting that the street fund has not been in the black?
So, yeah, so that, I should probably correct the statement. There is a beginning of balance that we would be using up. That could be saved for other projects, such as street repairs. Um, for, for the year from without the beginning of balance, no, it is the rent, it is running in a deficit. So we would be chewing away whatever savings we have.
And what is our Indian fund down?
That, um. With it or without it? Actually, I don't have those numbers.
I'll grab it real quick.
So.
Two hundred and sixty eight thousand three hundred thirty dollars unappropriated. Two hundred fifty thousand beginning fund balance.
That's correct, so we would have.
Less than minus all of our revenues and expenses, and we're gonna end up with more. Than what we started with, and you're calling that a deficit.
If we were moving the beginning of balance, we will be running in a negative for that year.
Without the.
Sorry, yeah, without the tax, is that year alone, we're running in a negative. We would be giving in at the beginning of the balance by about thirty thousand. Which was moving out the community for, um. Future projects, preferably as, uh, grant some natural dollars. Uh, a good example is the bridge we have, the project that's used and dire. It's soon to be, it needs to repair, that is gonna be a rather large chunk of change, and we will need this, or this. There is an example.
Okay, so are you suggesting that this ordinance, I mean, that, uh, the added one twenty-five cents per gallon is already included in this proposed budget?
That is correct, just like.
Okay, so now I'm following you. So in previous years, we got seventy thousand. Well, last year we budgeted seventy thousand. So with this increase, we would bring in about ninety thousand. Okay, thank you. Now I follow it.
Uh, any other questions of staff? Rick, probably an impossible number, but how many, uh, much of that revenue do you think would be from out of towners or in town, in town?
If it doesn't also remember, I I didn't know if we checked that.
Yeah, and it's a, it's a dealer prerogative whether they pass that tax on to the consumer.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, any other comments? Right, uh, the motion was moved to approve ordinance nine forty-seven after a first reading. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Mayor Ketchum?
Hi.
Councillor Brewer?
I.
Councillor Bjornson?
I.
Councillor Tarmann?
I.
Councillor Coker?
I.
Councillor Kenyon?
I.
All right, motion passing unanimously, James?
City of Oakbridge ordinance nine four seven, ordinance amendment section three B of ordinance eight seven six, ordinance of going to business license tax on motor vehicle fuel dealers providing for administration enforcement collection of the tax and declaring emergency. Whereas we on December of two thousand and four to the Oakbridge enacted ordinance eight seven six, a business license tax on motor vehicle fuel dealers providing for administration enforcement of the tax. Whereas the public highways, roads and streets in the city and those subject to city control are consistently in the construction or reconstructive improvements or fair of the things to promote these or travel in Congress in the around the city. Whereas the city council has determined if reasons actually ties section three B of the license tax of increase, license tax from zero three, which three cents per gallon of such newer vehicle fuel so sold to point zero four five dollars or four point five cent per gallon of such newer vehicle fuel so sold. Now therefore, the city of Oakbridge, where it is followed, section one, section three B of ordinance eight seven six shall be amended, as follows. A license that included on basis of one zero four five dollars or four one half cents per gallon of motor vehicle fuel. So so if you use or distribute it as such by such a statement to the data and within the time divided with the scope.
Okay, thank you. Is there another motion that might be made tonight on this agenda bill?
I know we approve and adopt ordinance nine four seven after a second reading by title only.
Yeah, well, your second. Which may be councillor Kenyon, second by councillor Coker, any questions or discussion on the second reading? And heard the motion was to move to approve and adopt ordinance nine forty-seven after a second reading by title only. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Councillor Bjornson?
I.
Councillor Brewer?
I.
Mayor Ketchum?
Hi.
Councillor Coker?
Hi.
Councillor Kenyon?
I.
Councillor Tarmann?
I.
All right, motion passes unanimously. And moving on to item.
James needs to read it by title.
Oh, by title. Thank you, Jackie.
Right, ordinance nine four seven, ordinance amendment section three B of ordinance eight seven six, ordinance of going to business license tax on motor vehicle fuel dealers administration enforcement collection of the tax.
Thank you. All right, ten point eight, that's the stat, establishing the Willamette Activity Center Capital Reserve Fund, James?
Yeah, all right, so similar to the I have ten point four, uh, we are required by law, uh, capacity register points to establish in the fund. Is a fund that we previously had in the budget. Forgot to have, uh, resolutions officially included in the budget. Brought it back in, simply into uh, passes revolution to have the WAC capital reserve fund. Approximately three point five hundred dollars transferred into the fund.
Thank you, James. Um, again, we'll, uh, open this up for public comment on establishing this, uh, the WAC Capital Reserve Fund. You're online or in the room? Please.
If you can transfer that much money, it will be able to come up with your
Of course, this is the money that's going to the WAC, the golden grace can only be stolen away.
Please.
Um, are there plans for the WAC? I don't know if I can ask that.
Yes, uh, look at the city website. Search for Lamont Activity Center or WAC, uh, to, we have paid for it. It's, um, it has the current plan, or you put a bunch there. We just did some two or three. They're simply uh, it's open to recent public, unlimited numbers going at your input. We WAC, so it can be. We have lots of ways to verification of the city of talks.
All right, any other public comment on the WAC Reserve Fund? All right, close out public comment. Go hear a motion on this.
I have a motion.
Yeah.
I move to, uh, I know that we approve resolution, resolution eighteen point two dash two four, excuse me, I'm so sorry, let me start over. I know that we approve resolution eighteen dash twenty twenty-four, establishing the Willamette Activity Capital Reserve Fund after first reading.
All right, motion was made by councillor Brewer, second by councillor Coker. Any questions, councillors on this issue? All right, none heard. The motion was, uh, to approve resolution eighteen twenty twenty-four, establishing the Lamont Activity Center Capital Reserve Fund after first reading. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yes. Councillor Tarmann?
I.
Councillor Brewer?
I.
Councillor Kenyon?
I.
Mayor Ketchum?
Hi.
Councillor Coker?
Hi.
Councillor Bjornson?
I.
All right, motion passes unanimously, James?
Right, city of Oakbridge, resolution eighteen dash two zero two four, resolution establishing the Lamont Activity Center WAC Capital Reserve Fund. Whereas the city of Oakbridge owns the town's real property known as the Lamont Activity Center. And whereas the city has been awarded grant funds for capital projects at the WAC. And whereas the city council of the city of Oakbridge desires to seek further funding for capital projects in the WAC. And whereas the city council of the city of Oakbridge has determined that the map organization funds should be clearly defined in the city budget. Funds dedicated to capital projects at the WAC. And whereas the local government elects to create a new reserve fund in the city budget, or as two ninety-four point three four six requires the local government to adopt the resolution ordinance to create a new fund. And whereas the city desires to create a third fund for capital projects at the WAC. Now we have it resolved by the city council of the city of Oakbridge, that section one, the Lamont Activity Center Capital Reserve Fund, sent to ours number four point three four six. City hereby established the Lamont Activity Center Capital Reserve Fund to provide a budgetary fund for the purpose of receiving and spending funds for capital reserve projects of the WAC. Section two, review of reserve fund. Not less frequently than every ten years after the establishment of this reserve fund, the city council shall review your reserve fund and determine whether the funds will be concluded or abolished. The fact of date, this resolution shall affect on July twenty-four.
Thank you, James. Your second motion we made on this, in the bill.
My one, my move that we approve resolution eighteen dash two zero two four, establishing the Lamont Activity Center Capital Reserve Fund after a second reading by title only.
All right, motion made by councillor Brewer, second by councillor Coker, discussion on the second reading. Nothing heard. Motion was, uh, to approve resolution eighteen twenty twenty-four, establishing the Lamont Activity Center Capital Reserve Fund after a second reading by title only. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yes. Mayor Ketchum?
Hi.
Councillor Kenyon?
I.
Councillor Coker?
I.
Councillor Brewer?
I.
Councillor Bjornson?
I.
Councillor Tarmann?
I.
All right, motion passing unanimously, James?
Right, uh, resolution eighteen dash two zero two four, resolution establishing the Lamont Activity Center Capital Reserve Fund.
Thank you, James. Uh, I'll make one motion, uh, that is to direct the city administrator to begin planning for the orderly shutdown of the local government, with the exception of essential services in accordance with O R S. And bring a brief to the city council prior to the end of the month. We hear a second on that.
Second.
Right, motion made by me and seconded by councillor Tarmann. Any discussion or questions on?
You repeat the motion?
Yes, uh, move to direct the city administrator to begin planning for the orderly shutdown of the local government with the exception of essential services in accordance with the O R S. And bring a brief back to city council before the end of the month. In the event adopted, a budget is not adopted. Forgot to add that.
Do you have it at the beginning?
Yes. In the event a budget is not adopted. All right, uh, again, motion was made by me and seconded by councillor Tarmann. Any other questions on this? All right, uh, Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yes, Mayor Ketchum?
Hi.
Councillor Kenyon?
I.
Councillor Coker?
I.
Councillor Brewer?
I.
Councillor Bjornson?
I.
Councillor Tarmann?
I.
All right, motion passes unanimously. On to, let's see, no business from the city administrator, James?
I just have a couple of things, uh, so the, this one year point two twenty-three audit is, you're young, the draft is out. Uh, we are having a meeting about that with the opportunity to twenty-five AM. Proposed amendments to the city charter, uh, been prepared. We're looking at having public hearings on July eleventh, July eighteen. I'm going to go to turn it out soon. The one on July eleventh is a public hearing. These councillors are welcome to attend on July eighteen. This also public hearing, but it's also a work session, so it becomes five PM on July eighteen. I think it will be coming out soon, like, maybe charter will be committed for a lot of part of it. That's leaving in last week alone, and we may be thirty-one, right, we, we probably noticed. Perfect.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
All right, nothing was moved from the consent agenda. Um, we've already been through the ordinance and resolutions, as well as public carings. Public comment, last chance for public comment tonight. Mr. Carl.
Uh, Gary Carl, East First Street, Oakbridge. At the outset, I believe councillor Coker made a motion to eliminate the stipend at the fire department. That motion failed because of the three to three vote. However, one of the councillors that voted or declined to vote, councillor Hollis correctly declined to vote because of an actual conflict of interest. Councillor, um, Bjornson, who also has an actual conflict of interest, did vote. She doesn't have an actual conflict, she doesn't receive the stipend?
She has a potential conflict of interest, which is what she announced at the beginning of the meeting. On all budget items, her conflict is a potential, and by law, that allows her to vote and discuss.
By council rules of procedure, we don't get into a discussion during public comment.
Thank you for reminding me.
Yeah, my understanding is or was that councillor Bjornson received a stipend of volunteer of the fire department. If that's the case, then she has an actual, in my opinion, she has an actual conflict of interest and should not have voted.
Thank you, thank you. Any other public comment? Uh, is that, Chrisman, is it, uh, mister or misses?
Misses.
Please.
Uh, Brenna Chrisman, four seven seven eight nine, Commercial Street. I just have a question, um, why do we have a budget committee to begin with? If the council members that are on the budget committee are gonna be disingenuous and vote for the budget to get approved to go on to city council only for them to then deny it. Um, councillor Kenyon made a motion to remove two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars from the police department while the denying, did not approve to remove the volunteer stipend of fifty thousand dollars. The fire department has already spent three hundred and three thousand dollars on seasonal workers this year, as well as a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars on overtime. It seems a little it just doesn't seem to really add up when you, there's definitely to miss Davis's earlier comment that there are people that vote together or, um, things get super personal. I was attacked personally at the last meeting by a councillor member, and then also to Mr. Carl's comment, um, I too think that the councillor who is getting financially, financially benefiting from a stipend should not be voting on the approval or denial of the removal of said stipends. That's all.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Barclay, is your hand up?
Yeah, just a couple of quick points, and thanks for reminding me, Brenna. And I'll, I'll ask the room because I don't know the answer, but uh, could not, I mean, you got fifty thousand in volunteer stipends making five, six dollars an hour and three hundred and some thousand, um, for seasonal temporary help or whatever. Would it not be feasible or, or possible or legal or whatever it is? That the volunteers would actually take more shifts and the volunteers and the, or, or the, uh, the temporary help or the seasonal help would take less shifts? Because if I remember the budget committee meeting, it was twenty, thirty dollars an hour for the seasonal, um, temporary help and four, five dollars an hour for the, um, people receiving the stipend. And aside from, it, we take councillor Bjornson out of the mix, you have five voting members. Two voted against removing it. So you still would not have your four votes to remove it, and the motion would have failed either way, whether she voted or not, you would have a three-two, motion fails. Or three-three, motion fails. So either way, it didn't affect the outcome in any way, shape or form. And she did declare potential conflict, as always, like Chrissy always declares an actual conflict interest. But I'm just, just curious if some of the, the money being spent on volunteer stipends couldn't, you know, we might increase that amount, but we would decrease the amount spent on seasonal or temporary help. But I don't know if that's feasible or not. That's, that's a question for Scott or somebody that's more knowledgeable about that. Anyhow, that, just a couple of quick observations.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments? All right, before we move on to adjournment, James, what do you think the schedule looks like, given the, uh, failure of ten point one? Alright, before we move from adjournment, James, so what do you think the schedule looks like, given the, uh, failure of ten point one?
Again, I think if say this was to do this, would be rather than adjourn, uh, to continue the budget hearing. With a certain. Be this Thursday. When it. We got open. But, uh. Public safety. Has been eliminated, so. That will be. Bringing some ideas, so. To council on Thursday. Uh, most of us. Right, and that's will be running from. Weeks and five P M's that. Public safety fee is established for split fifty fifty. That is the new council. Probably related to that's. On fire.
Yeah, but there will have to be a follow-on meeting after Thursday.
Yes, we will need an additional meeting, because I.
Unless it's unanimous.
Yeah, right, I doubt it, I mean, I'm exposed. Okay, so we're meeting on the twentieth. Second meeting could occur. On Saturday the twenty-second. Could occur on Sunday the twenty-third. Could occur on Monday. Twenty-first. Monday the twenty-fourth after the audit committee moved the file, so I recommend seven P M, Monday the twenty-fourth.
Is the audit committee taking the, the audit from the auditor on that day?
Hoping to have it for that. We have it. Discuss, because.
But the auditor hasn't been invited.
The auditor hasn't went.
Hasn't been invited to that meeting?
She has to.
Okay, alright, I just didn't know if we could just cancel it and reschedule it.
We, that is an option.
Think this is kind of pressing. So, why don't we plan for Monday that, um, at six P M, if anyone have a problem there? Online, anybody have any counselors have a problem with Monday, six P M for a city council meeting? Yes. Nothing heard? Alright, let's try to make that happen, James. Alright, do I hear movement, a move to adjourn?
Or continue.
Continue, sorry. Alright, so we were going to continue this budget hearing, keeping it open, which means it will have more public comment. On Thursday, correct, James?
Correct.
Yep, on this budget. Anyone else, last chance, last alibi.
Just quickly confirming, you said Monday at six P M?
Yes.
It's the second, okay.
Alright. Meeting is continued.